Mr. Chairman, we're left.
Okay, welcome everyone in the audience and those on YouTube. Today is our Wicked Thee County Commissioner meeting. This is Tuesday, January 16th. At this time, I please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. We've all had a chance to look at the agenda. If there's no additions or corrections, I entertain a motion to approve.
We do need to amend.
Okay.
We need to approve, uh, which one is it? The sled dog challenge needed a signature in order to get their permit from the city of Cascade.
Where do you want to put that?
Any of our...
Put it under Commissioner's discussion. Sled dog signature.
And then I think we got the other letter. Uh, let's see if we got the other letter on here.
Payette National Forest.
Yes.
Law enforcement equipment. Yeah, that's the last matter at the 905.
Okay, oh, perfect. So where'd you put it?
Just put it underneath that.
The 905, okay, perfect.
Yep.
And I did, um, I think we got that, that letter in. Doug, did you get a letter from him? Did I send you what he had given me? The application. I know I did the payout for you.
Let me see, uh...
As I bought us some new pens, but they got...
You got red stuff on the bottom.
Oh, I got a tip on the bottom of the...
Plastic or something. Keep writing red. There we go.
Commissioner Mopkin, I apologize. There was nothing attached with email from Jerry Wortley.
I will try and find that then.
Let me see, there was, it's down, uh, download. Let me see if I can open it. It's like a zip file. Came across as a JPG, but let me see if I can print this off.
So if there's, if we're good on that, you want to make a motion to amend the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the agenda with an amendment to add the sled dog challenge permits signature.
Second. And a motion is second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Doug, I do have it. Do you want me to print it?
If you can. It just came as a JPG and I don't have the ability to print it for some reason.
Uh, well, let me print it, too. Um, let me see what I...
You ready to move forward, Douglas?
Yeah, go ahead. I'll just...
Hey, we're gonna move right on down to our agenda. These are all action items. First one is the meeting minutes of January 8th. Everybody get a chance to look at those?
Yep, 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 yep.
So...
Uh, yes, and I made some changes and Doug did those.
You get the changes done?
I did, yes, sir.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve those as amended.
Second motion to approve the agenda or the minutes of January 8th.
A second.
Second to approve the minutes of January 8th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the next agenda item is an action item. This is sign a letter of support to the recreational trails advisory committee. You know, is anybody coming in on this?
Do we have anything in our packet?
That's not up here on our items, is it?
Nope.
That be Dave?
No, I think it's somebody from the ski club.
Supporting the grant application, so that's all one. She flurries around. Lake Ski Club. Oh, thanks.
Chairman, I apologize. That's... Uh, let me... It's from Ed Roper.
We didn't get anything on that, Doug.
Okay, that's...
That I could find.
Let me, I thought it was in the packet. Bear with me.
Hey, it's out. Hey, uh, can you come up and talk to us about this recreational trails letter of support? Yeah, okay, see you in a sec. Bye. Larry's on his way. I don't see anything, Doug, but maybe I missed it.
I don't think Larry has, I think Doug has.
I don't think we have it in our packet.
It's the Valley County RTP.
RTP? Okay, here we go. It's at the very bottom. Uh, County...
RTP?
Yeah. Little ski hill.
Air Basins Program.
Oh, this is to purchase a new groomer. Run up Larry to the mic. I'm assuming this RTP grant is for a new groomer.
This is not...
I can barely hear you. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but this is not Larry's matter. This was presented by Ed Roper, who is, uh, I think the chairman of the Payette Lake Ski Club, and he provided us with this letter of support that he, they are applying for the grant through Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation.
This, I'm assuming went through the Trails Committee?
Uh, he produced it, or he did talk about it in the winter rec committee. And he asked for letters of support.
Okay. So this is a letter of support for a new groomer for the recreational trails Payette Lake Ski Club?
Correct. I think we'd be fine with doing this. I know Ed personally, he's...
Yeah.
Good guy.
Letter of support.
Yep.
You guys have seen the letter. If you're good with it, I'd entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion.
I'm assuming you'll print it out, Doug.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve the letter of support for the Payette Lake Ski Club.
A second.
And move, motion is second to approve the letter of support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Larry. Okay. Next agenda item is also an action item. This is a letter of support for the Payette National Forest seeks on law enforcement equipment. And I believe this is in your packet, too. Sheriff, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Is that for the snowmobile?
Yeah, I think so.
No, this is for the LEO, or the, you guys are trying to get, um, uniforms and those were the after.
You're sure? That's the one I read that had the snowmobile.
Didn't?
They wanted money for, which I don't get why we would be paying for.
This is a grant that they're actually trying to get. She had reached out and I went ahead and told her I'd put it on the agenda and then...
Purchase one snowmobile for the Payette National Forest.
Okay.
Be used for law, official law enforcement duties.
So how does, yeah...
So there, is this the one where they're sure they're looking for a letter of support for a snowmobile purchase?
It is, yep.
But they're not asking us to pay for it?
That I don't know, and I would hope not.
That's what it sounded like.
I, I understand they need the snowmobile. But it's kind of strange for the federal government becoming, asking the county to buy a snowmobile for them to patrol federal ground.
Exactly.
Um, while they sent it out, I mean, they, they're applying for a grant.
And if it's the same thing, Stacy asked me for a letter of support for a grant and I'll, I'll sign that for her. I just, if it comes to where, I think it's a whole different conversation if they're asking the county to fund their snowmobile.
Well, one...
On off-road motor vehicle grant.
Where's that at?
In the very first, whoops, in the very first paragraph there. And they sent it out, they're going through Parks and Rec, too, I believe. I'm curious. I mean, I know they can use rack funds for this. I don't have rack funds right now, but, and I don't know that they can't use Title III funds.
I'm not sure what their funding mechanisms are. A letter of support for a grant, you know, as sheriff, I, I'll, I'll sign that. But like I said, it, to me, it's a different conversation if they're asking for the county to fund.
I don't think they are here. They're, they're just asking to apply.
I, uh, obviously they're, they need the equipment to get around back there, too. And it, it kind of would be nice to have our federal partners back there once in a while with us because we don't see a lot of them in the winter, to be honest with you. And so I think it would be, it would be nice. And then a lot of that is they're, they're under-equipped.
They are gonna set up, I think, a friends group because they need uniforms. They need everything right from the start for what they're trying to accomplish.
Like winter, winter uniforms, like, yeah.
Sheriff, didn't we buy the Avalanche guys a new sled last year?
Yeah, I think that, was that the Friends of the Payette?
Yeah, I think so.
That's the Avalanche, and that's not the forest.
See, they talk about that here. Assist with search and rescue activities, signing and assisting with avalanche forecasting. Forcing special closures, checking registration compliance.
Which a lot of that, I mean, there's a lot of closures. I mean, we've been, we've been pretty busy right at the border with Adams over on the Brundage side where snow bikes and everything are just tearing everything up. Problem is, we can, we can enforce to the border. But if they're on the other side where, you know, the LEOs, they have jurisdiction throughout. And so that, that's kind of what we run into there is, is those jurisdictional borders right there at the, at the foot of Brundage.
Well, this may help with that issue, then.
Yes.
But they don't... Because I know you were talking about that before. What kind of legal authority? Can they write tickets? What are they allowed to do?
Yes, they, they can write closure tickets, unauthorized vehicle tickets. It's a, they're under federal code, so it's, it's a different, uh, different deal. It's not the state code. It doesn't come to our prosecutor's office. It's totally a, a federal deal. So they, they send, uh, their tickets like that, basically, for, for federal work.
Just on their land. You think it's off their land, they, they have no jurisdiction.
Right.
Right. Yeah, that, I can't find it on here. I read it over the weekend, but I don't, and it sounds just like they were asking...
Right under the agenda, Neil.
Uh-huh.
It's right under the agenda PDF. But I think, you know, this may help us long run as far as enforcement in these closed areas because that's gonna be the next jam on you guys' app. And they can take...
Yeah, I mean, obviously, they're LEOs. I'm, I'm not sure how well they're supported. Uh, I do know that I've seen Stacy with the fairly old sled in her vehicle. I, I don't see the other Forest Service LEO very often in the winter at all, if, if ever. See Stacy running around, so, I mean, it could be a force multiplier if she'd come with us. And we'd be, we'd be more than, more than willing and, uh, able to help her out and have us with her, you know, because I, I don't want anybody out there by themselves on a snowmobile.
That's what I'm concerned, Doug.
Get stuck and everything, so...
They're only asking for one sled. Well, that's not good.
You know, if, if it's something that she wanted to do to get together with us as a force multiplier, we'd be able to be able to back her up. If it does go over a county jurisdiction, we could still back her up. And that way, if, you know, trouble with the snowmobile, you know how things go back there. We'd have no problem with her being with us. Because two's better than three.
What is Brian? He's the new sheriff, I think, yeah. He was in last week and telling us about their plans and they've got all kinds of great plans that we need to support, so...
Okay, so I do entertain a motion then for this letter of support.
Chairman, I would move that we support the letter for the Payette National Forest on their law enforcement equipment.
I'll second it.
And a motion and a second, sign a letter of support for the Payette National Forest. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then on the next, the sled dog challenge, there is a permit application and I'm going to assume that just there's the signature of the owner, which I don't really know what that is, but that's all I see.
Oh, this is with the city of Cascade.
Yeah. The Cascade is requiring them, they, that they get a permit and we have to sign off on that permit. Let me just double verify. There's not something else there, but I don't, I don't see anything else.
What'd you say? Excuse me. The owner, so why wouldn't I sign?
Something regarding event cancellation. Special, oh, wait, here we go.
Where's it at?
LA County Sheriff. Special event permit, city staff review. Let me print this other one.
Yeah, because I don't see a signature spot. I'm not the owner. Why the city's asking for this?
This is on all of their permits, the...
Authorized...
Well, we got into that last year with the guys that wanted to rent the event, our event space. All right.
You find something different?
Uh, yeah, there's another...
Is that a center or packet?
No.
So there's this also. But it's, it won't let me print this. It's printing...
Is that the signature page?
I don't know. It's got the sheriff, Cascade World Fire, Cascade Building, Superintendent, the mayor.
Notice.
I don't see us on here. But there's also... Page before this. Printed name of authorized representative.
See, that's even different with this.
I'm gonna reach out to Jerry of the city. Let's postpone this till later in the day.
Okay. We're gonna postpone until...
He's gotta have it today in order to get his dog sled stuff done, so...
Okay, then we're gonna move on. Our next agenda item is also an action item. This is the Garnet Valley request for reconsideration decision. And as you guys know, this is kind of the second time it's come before us. After working with our civil attorney, we've come up with a different reasoning. The first one being the fact that we don't, it does not feel like State Valley Strong is an, an affected person. We don't really have any one person that is showing that they are personally affected. And so according to LUPA, that's not a, a consideration because you've got to be an affected person in order to ask for a reconsideration. The second part is the assertion that the chairman of planning and zoning Caldwell has had a conflict of interest. And through this, um, discussion, that it's important to understand that planning and zoning, what their decisions are, is strictly a recommendation to the board of county commissioners. They don't have the final say on that, and so we look at that. If there is a conflict, then consider that. But we, this board is the ones that make those final decisions. And I think that State Valley Strong has misconstrued the code because it fails to recognize that the board has retained the authority to make the decision on an application for a PUD. And we did have quite a few public hearings and we kind of, the decision we came up with was our decision, not planning and zonings. And the third and final part of this was the ex parte communications with Commissioner Mopkin at the West Central Mountains. And she has explained that she was not even present at the meeting. We have confirmation of that. So that, um, concern is not valid. And so the order that we've come up with tonight, today is that we find that State Valley Strong is not an affected person entitled to the relief it has requested in its motion of reconsideration, and the motion is hereby denied. The findings of facts and conclusions of law and decisions approved by this board on November 1st, '23 is affirmed without modification. The board takes it very seriously, the requirement to provide a fair and unbiased decision-making process. We found no evidence that Commissioner Caldwell had any reason to recuse herself in the P and Z proceedings, and her participation did not taint or influence the final outcome of the board's decision to approve PUD 2301 and CUP 2310. And as, as explained above, Commissioner Mopkin was not present during the Garnet Valley discussion on the May 13, '23 West Central Mountain Economic Development Council meeting, and any other allegation otherwise is simply incorrect. So at this time, I need a motion to approve this reconsideration decision.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the Garnet Valley request for reconsideration decision.
I'll second it.
I'm a little confused on the motion.
Are we denying or approving?
We approve the order denying the request for reconsideration as written, denying State Valley Strong's motion.
Yep. It was just written a little different on here, so...
And I will second that motion.
Hey, we got a motion and a second to reaffirm the decision on reconsideration. Excuse me. In the matter of Garnet Valley, PUD 2301 and CUP 2310. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries. And we all signed this one dated today.
Mr. Chairman, I thought the prosecuting attorney was gonna provide it, but we will print it off, uh, right now, and I'll have Deputy Recorder Robin Elliott bring it up.
Arnie, do you have one already printed up? You, come on up.
Thank you.
Today is the 16th day of January. Doug, you need to attest. Make sure you're helping that, Arnie. Okay, we're gonna move down to our next agenda item. This is also an action item. This is to approve the assessor's request to cancel a market value, 17 and 18. Sue, good morning.
Good morning.
I'll turn it over to you.
Um, we have received, um, the last four BTA decisions. The first two that I will present will be a market value cancellation. And the last two remaining that we were waiting for came in last week. And I just want to let the board know that the BTA upheld, uh, the county's decision on Highway Chapel. And they also upheld the county's values on Mike Falconer property.
Oh, so they're not, we're talking about two other ones today, though.
Yeah, I just wanted to know. We did get the, all of the decisions in finally late last week.
How long do they have to appeal the BTA?
I believe they have 30 days to take it to district court if they so choose.
That's really good news, especially on the chapel because we've been watching that one for years, so...
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, so the first cancellation that I am requesting is number 17 for Brenda McLean. The Board of Tax Appeals, I don't know if you'll remember or not, but I suggested that we lower the land grade by one grade because he had a filtered view of the lake. I presented that to Mr. McLean. He, uh, still wanted to take it to BTA hoping that the BTA would allow them a 25%, negative 25% adjustment on the improvements as well. Uh, the Board of Tax Appeals stated in their decision that they did not feel that that was appropriate. So they did accept my request to lower the land grade by one grade. So on Mr. McLean's parcel, RP 00215000109A, I am asking that you cancel $43,730 in land value.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
If so, I would entertain a motion to approve cancellation 17.
I'll make a motion that we approve cancellation number 17.
Second.
You can second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Just hold them there and let Sue 18.
Moving on to cancellation number 18 for Robert Gearhart. I had corrected numerous, uh, things on his record for his improvement. And I had shared those changes with him. He wanted to hold out, hoping he would get a negative 25% on top of that. The Board of Tax Appeals denied that request. So with the changes that I had proposed, we are canceling $32,079 in value for parcel number RP 00215000031A.
So he was, he was doing some work on his place? Is that what was it?
Uh, so he had built a new home. And, uh, when I was reviewing his record, after being out there, I realized we didn't have the covered decks gone on. The size of one of the utility sheds was off. Fixed that. And we had ran his lower level as a basement garage. Basement garages, we, we had issues with how they value for a couple of years now. We're trying to get that corrected. But after I made all of the changes, adding things, taking things away, it came in at $32,079 less. And that mainly was the value on the difference between a basement garage and a hatch garage.
Right.
And the BTA accepted, um, the value that we, the county proposed.
I'll make a motion that we approve, um... Number, cancellation number 18.
I'll second that.
Who did second to approve? Market value cancellation number 18. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Run up, Sue. One up, Sue. Here we go. All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to take a ten-minute break and then we'll see if we're back here at nine forty-five. Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're at our nine forty-five agenda. This is, these are all action items. First one up is McKenzie is submit the building resilient infrastructure in communities application for the all-hazard mitigation plan. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. We are asking for forty-six thousand four hundred and fifty and they are providing in kind match of fifteen thousand five hundred and three.
Our share was how much?
Um, fifteen thousand five hundred and three.
I'm sorry, you gotta say that again.
Fifteen thousand five hundred and three and it is in kind, so they're providing the labor for it.
Is that in our packet?
Nope.
Should be.
No. See it.
I can send you guys the application.
I thought it was in there.
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Valley County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. The second one from the bottom.
Oh, my gosh, way on the bottom down here.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the submittal for a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan update.
This is to help pay for the brick study and all that, the people from BSU?
No, it's just to update all the Valley County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan that we already have.
We always, we do this every year, don't we?
Every five years.
Oh, every five?
Yeah.
I'm not going to read it all because there's twenty-two pages.
It was a long one.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second to approve, to approve submitting a building resilient infrastructure in communities application for the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay.
So this, our part is the fifteen thousand?
Yes.
But that is, it's in kind because everybody that shows up to all of the hazard mitigation meetings gets paid so much per hour, so we actually don't have to come up with the money. It's all done in kind.
All right. Oh, that's sweet.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this, the, the plan itself allows us to apply for a lot of grants. If we don't have the plan, it doesn't, it'll give anything.
Exactly, it's very hard.
Hit close on the bottom of that and see if that'll go away.
Uh, the next item up is an action item again, signed resolution number two thousand twenty-four oh six, FY twenty-four federal aid bridge grant application.
Yes, so this is for the Lake Fork Creek Bridge, the letter support you signed last week. I did want to point out, um, last week the estimate was nine hundred thousand, but I had Scott Wood, an engineer with LTAC, reevaluate the budget and it's now up to one million five hundred and eighty-five thousand, but there's no match requirement.
Well, if it's that much, we definitely need a grant.
Yes.
And need to move forward getting this done.
One million two hundred and ninety-five thousand.
One million five eighty-five.
Yeah, that one, that's just for the construction.
That's the old one.
I think you're looking at the local federal aid project request where it breaks out the one point two for construction.
Yep. There it is, total project. Okay, so if everyone's good at this side, entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-four oh six.
Chairman, I would move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-four oh six.
Second.
You can second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So when are we going to get one of these resolutions for the S Bridge? Come on, girl.
It's in the works.
You can do this.
It's on my list, I know. I hear you.
There may have to be other avenues to get funding in place.
We could do other avenues, I don't care.
Or cannot.
Hey, our next agenda is, item is also an action item. This is to sign the local federal aid project request. What is this one?
So this is still the Lake Fork Creek Bridge. It's just one of the ITD twenty-four thirty-five, it's just a requirement, the application for you to sign. It kind of outlines what we're doing, traffic control, bridge, environmentally sensitive areas, goes through all that.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we sign the application for the Lake Fork Creek Bridge rehabilitation.
Second.
And moved and second to assign the local federal aid project request, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Next agenda item is an action item also as well, sign the certificate of completion of right-of-way activities.
So this is for the transportation, transportation alternative program and we do own all right-of-ways along Lakeshore Drive that project area, so we just need a.
Yep, so I'll make the motion that we sign the certificate of completion of right-of-way activities for Lakeshore Drive.
Second.
Move to second, all in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So that part of that pathway, is it going down there in Donnelly?
Actually out here on, right past the golf course.
Oh, the one that go around the lakeshore. Got it, got it, got it, yep.
Okay, I think this is the last one. This is also an action item, approval to submit transportation alternatives program of application for Lakeshore Drive Shared Use Path Project. This, this is as Sherry stated for the bike path as well.
Yeah, so we're asking for five hundred thousand and our match is thirty-six thousand seven hundred.
That would be awesome.
How much is our match again?
Thirty-six thousand, thirty-six thousand seven hundred.
Seven hundred.
Okay, is there a motion to approve that?
Make a motion that we approve the, uh, approval, uh, certificate for completion of right-of-way, is that right?
Next one.
The one right below it. Submit transportation alternative program application for Lakeshore Drive Shared Use Path Project.
Second.
And a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries, come on up.
I think we just did the hardest part of the day.
Well, those words.
You never know.
But can I put the date's date on?
There's, we need a new computer there, I think.
Or at least a new subscription to Microsoft.
One fifteen twenty-four. We're okay. Oh, that one stays here, well, never mind. All right, perfect, thank you.
That one goes to Doug.
Thanks, McKenzie, have a great day. Okay, we're going to move on down. Our next agenda item is not an action item. This is a presentation for the FY twenty-four Boise Forest Service Project in Cascade. I would like to welcome Boise National Forest District Ranger Christopher Bentley. Christopher, welcome.
Thank you so much. It's so good to be in front of you and to meet you finally. I feel kind of ashamed to say that I haven't had the chance to, to meet most of you, but it sure is great to finally meet you face to face and to be here. So I'm going to have to play this a little bit by ear. Is it okay if I, if I sit so I can run?
And then slide that microphone in front of you.
Oh, sure, yeah. That would be great. Awesome, I was wondering if there was an online audience here, so. Well, awesome. Just to introduce myself a little bit before I dive into the presentation itself, you know, since. you know, since this is really the first time that I've met most of you. I grew up in Ogden, Utah, so these mountains seem very familiar to me. It's good to be back in, in, in the right mountain range instead of the many others that I've been working in, in the past fifteen years or so. I, I've, I've worked for the Forest Service for those fifteen years, and I've served in lots of different areas, mainly in Oregon and Washington, but I have spent some time in DC as well, filling some, some assignments. And most recently, before I landed this, this assignment, I was working out of the regional office for Region Six, which is Oregon and Washington, for the Forest Service, and that, that was based out of Portland. So pretty big difference from Portland to Cascade, hopping Cascade, but I love small towns. Been in town smaller than this, and love the community sense, and, and my goodness, Cascade is such a great town. I love it. Love the people, love the, the great outdoor scene, the great access that we have here. So it's really a great place to work for the Forest Service. So, and I'm also thrilled, because I think we had an amazing year last year that I'm excited to tell you about, as well as some of the plans that we have set for this fiscal year as well. We're gonna be ramping things up again this year, so. I guess one last bit of introduction, that, a little bit about how I work and why I work for the Forest Service. You know, there are probably dozens and dozens of reasons why people would choose to work for the Forest Service. For me, it really comes down to the mission of the Forest Service, you know, which is protecting the land and serving the people, and I love that intersection. I, I've long believed, from as long as I remember having any sort of a land ethic, I, I've always believed that the best way of getting people to care about the land is by introducing them to the land, get them out on the land, and then let them connect with the land however they, they want to, basically. And that's sort of the blessing and the challenge of the Forest Service, I think, because we offer lots of opportunities, and sometimes there's a little bit of friction between those uses, right? Thinking about, you know, the thriving and great ATV user groups versus the bird watching group, or, you know, those that are looking for nature hikes, you know? So there's a little bit of a tension there, but, but I feel like it's my job to be the mediator between all of these different interest groups to try to come up with the best scenario, so that, so that all of them can enjoy at least most of what they want with, with their outdoor experience. So, and I, I believe that we can, we can maintain the kinds of uses that we have right now for generations after generation, if we work together. That's really the key thing. We really need to work together for the greater good. As long as we're driving towards that, I think that anything's possible, so. Okay, so just to dive in a little bit, I'm just gonna run through some of the programs and some of the, the numbers that, that we accomplished this year. So to start out, let's start with our fuels program, our prescribed fire program. So I don't know if, I'm sure you all know Jim Bishop. He was definitely a staple on, on the Cascade District for a long time. He retired this fall, or last fall, unfortunately. Happy for him, very sad for us, but he, he ran through and managed one of those prescribed fires. And then we have a new fuels person. His name is Matt Harp, and he is in charge of the fuels program now. And he did a really great job with this Willow South prescribed fire that took place in September. And Jim did a really great job of taking a step back and letting Matt run things, but we were able to burn one hundred and seventy-seven acres over four or five different units over on West Mountain. It was very successful. We had some great consumption, and I think it'll make that area a lot more protected from future wildfires. As well as, it's such a great way of restoring the landscape too, because, you know, in the West, our landscapes are fire adaptive. They've evolved with wildfire, and so wildfire is a necessary piece, but it's, it's a lot safer and a lot better when we're able to control that fire rather than letting it, you know, go as wildfire. So Willow South was really successful. This was the Lost Horse, was the prescribed fire that Jim, his last prescribed fire of his career. He conducted that in May, and that, that was also super successful, great consumption. We had to wait. Ordinarily, our prescribed fires start in April, but you remember last year just how, how snowy and how long that snow held on. I mean, my goodness, I think I had snow at my house until June, or even early July, so, yeah, so we had to delay a little bit, but we were still able to, to conduct a really great prescribed fire. That one was over closer to the four oh nine road on the east side of, of the lake. Actually, it's in the, the same area approximately where the east fire burned last, last summer. And, and we can actually attribute some of the, some of the success with that wildfire to the fact that we had just done that prescribed fire the spring before. Of course, having three inches of rain fall in a weekend helped things too, so the east fire certainly laid down after that. And then another, another piece that often doesn't get very much limelight is our pile burning program. We try to burn piles of leftover scraps from timber sales, and we often send out our fire crews in the spring and in the fall to collect debris and things so that the forest floor can have less fuel for potential wildfire. And then we pile that up, and then we let it cure for a year, and then the following year, we burn it. If we burn it when it's too green, it doesn't, it doesn't really meet our prescription, and it just smokes a lot. So, yeah, we, altogether, we, we cleared five hundred and thirty-three acres worth of debris, and we burned a considerable amount of that in November. We're planning on burning some more in the spring of this year too. Okay, so now, to look at the year ahead, I know this is a lot, a very busy slide, but it's just to show how busy we're going to be in the spring and in the fall. So we have a few prescribed fire plans in place, a couple in the spring and a couple in the fall. Obviously, it's gonna be weather dependent. We have to make sure that we have the right window, because it's sort of that Goldilocks scenario, where it's not too hot and dry, but it's hot and dry enough that fuels can actually catch, and, and we can get some good consumption. So we're gonna be watching that carefully in the spring and then again in the fall. But just to give you some sense of the total acreage that we're planning, nine hundred and forty-eight acres planned. Of course, that doesn't mean that that's how many we're actually going to end up getting, but if we are successful, and if the weather and the conditions cooperate, we should almost double, or I guess almost triple, the amount of prescribed fire on the land from the previous year. And the previous year was quite a bit more than the year before, so you can see we're, we're moving in the right direction. And I, I'm sure I don't need to tell you, you know, having you lived, having lived in, in this environment long enough, but if, if we don't, if we don't introduce some controlled burns, Mother Nature is going to put it on the ground for us. And so that's why we put so much emphasis on prescribed fire, and why we, you know, watch those weather windows so carefully, and why we, we bring in our, our fire crews early, and, and often we keep them late for that very purpose, so that we can, so that we can have the best shot that we can to do as much prescribed fire as possible, because that's really the best way of restoring the landscape and those fire adapted landscapes, and then also to protect, to protect the surrounding community, especially in those woo-wee situations in the wildland urban interface like we have on West Mountain, like we have along the four oh nine road, lots of other areas around, around the lake. So I'm really excited to see how, how well we're gonna be able to accomplish that, but I think we're, we're ready. Just a, a question of whether or not we get those weather windows. I guess before I move on, any questions about the, the plan for prescribed fire ahead this year?
Just one question. Where's the Skunk Creek unit? Is that out in the Clear Creek area? Is that?
Uh, yeah, so it's, it's near the four oh nine, so it's south of where the east fire burned as well, so it's a, it's like the, yeah.
Cause we have Skunk Creek out, going up towards East Mountain as well.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And the Fontastic is all the stuff along, from Seachin North?
Yeah, yeah, so along West Mountain there, yeah, yep. Good question, yep. Any other questions I could answer right now?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'm curious how our masticating program is coordinating with where you're trying to burn.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm really glad, just to touch on, just to show some of the treatments that we've had here. So these are total treatments, so, and when we talk about treatments, we're talking non, non-commercial and commercial timber sales, thinning contracts and those sorts of projects, trying to simulate wildfire by clearing out some of the smaller trees, leaving the larger trees to grow even better, because they don't have that competition. And then also, those larger trees don't have those ladder fuels that can lead up to the crown fires and things. So you can see that we're, we're trying to ramp up our efforts here, for sure. Again, this, this is projected, so we'll, we'll have to see how, how things match up, but I'm, I'm confident in my team's estimates here. So that seventeen forty-nine number is a pretty, a pretty good estimate, the number of acres we're going to be treating for commercial and non-commercial thinning. So that's sort of the mastication, you know, projects that you're talking about.
Well, Chris, does that include the last two years that didn't get done, or is that on top of those?
Yeah, so it's sort of rolled over from the previous year. So any projects that weren't completed in the last year, they get rolled into, well, the acres that are left to be treated are rolled over into, into the current year. Yeah.
Chris, the monies you make off commercial logging, what, what do you use that funds for?
Yeah, too, a, a lot of it goes back to the Treasury, but with certain, with simple, certain contracts, like good neighbor authority contracts, you might have, I think they're, oh, the name of the, uh, let me just skip down here. So you'll see that several of these projects have GNA next to it, so good neighbor authority. So with those types of contracts, we're able to recoup some of, some of the receipts for those timber sales to do restoration work, to restore campgrounds, trails, those sorts of things. I, I don't know right off the top of my head what the percentage is right now. I'd have to look into the individual contracts, but with those GNA ones, we, we do get to keep them, as well as some of the stewardship contracts, where usually those are a non-commercial thinning contracts, where we pay for the, the contract in part, and then the contractor does some additional work for us. So restoring streams, restoring roads, those sorts of things.
I'd like to see this, I don't know if the legislators in Washington could help out, but any of this commercial money needs to stay here. I mean, you, they could, our trail systems have gone to pot.
You can say it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, I mean, if you're gonna have more people that are coming up, trail systems, not, I'm not talking four-wheelers, that too, but I mean, a lot of the hiking trails I know on the pad and you guys, is, they're just almost gone, nonexistent. And I could be restored if we can keep the monies here, and I don't know the process it's gonna take to push them. Treasury definitely doesn't need, well, they probably think they need it, but they don't.
Yeah, well, you know, I think there are a lot of ways that we could work together. We could partner on putting in some contracts that would, we'd be able to recoup some of the receipts, and we could put it right on the ground to restore trails and, and other needs, campground restoration. And there's a portion in, in the presentation where I'm gonna talk a little bit more clearly about recreation, and I think I'd love your thoughts and ideas around that, for sure.
Now, there does have a, a, I don't know what you call it, legislative intent this year to try and encourage the Forest Service to do that. Nichols pushing that conversation to try and keep funds on the ground.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's Forest Service, it's mainly Washington, letting Forest Service basically become self-sustainable if they can keep their own receipts.
Yeah.
And that's what you wanna be. Every, every entity wants to be that way.
Absolutely, and one way that we could definitely go towards that, and I don't mind jumping around because it's such a great topic, one area where we could really focus on is fee retention. So there are lots of ways that, there are lots of, you know, ways that the Forest Service recoups some of its costs. One is through permits. So we issue permits to all kinds of entities, from national communication companies to local mom and pop, you know, outfitter guides. And, and so people pay fees because they're, they're benefiting from the land, and the public needs to experience benefit from that. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a simple transaction, right? If, if you're giving something, you, you need to get something in return. And so, so in this, in this way, and I'm gonna touch on this a little bit more too, but just, if we could figure out a better way of making sure that we're, we're actually collecting all of the fees that, that's due to us, I mean, my goodness, that would be hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars a year in addition to our budget, that we could put right back towards restoration, because, I mean, my, my salary comes out of a different pot of money. So if, if we had, if we had a million extra dollars just to restore trails and campgrounds, I mean, my goodness, how great would that be? So, yeah, yeah, I think you're thinking right down the right vein, yeah.
Just one other question on this. So the new proposed old growth rule?
Hmm, yeah.
How is that going to impact our ability to go in and either, you know, do some clearing or burn?
Yeah.
Do we really have that much here?
So it's a little bit preliminary to really say. They, they just announced the planning effort to determine the path forward on that. So we could be a year or two out until we actually have the analysis done to actually determine what that impact would be. But I'd imagine, just projecting, I'd imagine that once that, that planning effort is done, we might have to, have to draw new maps to showcase where those old growth pockets are. Our force plan already calls for certain protection of old growth anyway, so I don't think it's gonna have as much of an impact as, as we might think, because the Boise National Force has sort of been planning ahead. But but we'll have to see when the planning effort is done, yeah.
So just a real quick question come from an old logger.
Yeah, yeah.
When, I mean, what what's the reasoning behind protecting old growth?
Yeah. There's a there's a couple of added benefits to old growth. Sure, I'm not not teaching you anything you don't already know, but just old growth habitats support different ecosystems. And and over the last hundred years, we've lost a lot of our old growth. Categorized old growth forests in the country. And so I'm trying to remember, I think we're down to about twenty-five percent of of what used to be here nationwide. Now, in the West, it's a little bit different. We have more old growth in the West than than they do in the East. Because they logged a lot a lot more heavily in the East. So thankfully, we still have a considerable amount of old growth, even on on our forest. But throughout the West, but that's one reason. Also, they've they've done interesting studies that have shown that older trees retain carbon more efficiently than younger trees. And so for carbon capture and, you know, those those reasons. Now, there are there are opportunities for us to use the woody, the wood material that would still maintain some of that carbon capture, even if it was turned into wood products. So we're still doing research to determine that. You know, climate science is still a pretty young science, so we're still learning as we go. But those were some some reasons. So carbon capture and and habitat for especially for endangered species. A lot of unique species are tied to old growth. So and the reason why they're sort of looking at it nationwide rather than asking every forest to do it on their own is because just historically doing any sort of forest plan amendment has taken such a huge lift on every forest that's tried that. In fact, there are several instances where they've tried to revise their plan. And five years later, they've just given up. And so this way, they're trying to just do it all at once in one big chunk. So all of the forests nationwide are going through this, so.
Chris, you know, would this affect private landowner timberlands too, or just?
No, no, just just public lands. Yeah, although I'd imagine, you know, again, I'm just speculating. But I'd imagine that the federal government will probably try to incentivize private landowners in some new ways to protect old growth where where it's found. Because there is a considerable amount on private land too, yeah, so.
In fact, I think there's more in private land than there is on national.
There is actually, yeah, yep, so, yes.
The reason I bring that up is because it used to be you could sell it, you know, log to a sawmill a tree bigger than twenty-two inches. Now they won't take a tree that big. They don't have a sawhead that can handle a tree that big anymore. But you still have issues with lightning and some fire, some cases fire that goes in and wipes out an old growth forest. So you've still got to be able to do something with that material.
We're seeing it more and more often where wildfires have gone through and just devastated stands that have withstood fire for three hundred years, you know. And just with the more severe summer weather and more severe fire conditions that we're experiencing, I mean, it's a real, it's a reality now. And and so the Forest Service does have some programs through our state private program. Where we offer incentives like through our forest legacy program. And where we pay private landowners for keeping their their forest intact. And then they would still own the land, but they would give up some of their development rights. So, yeah, so we're we're working through some of those options.
Like in my case, I had a bunch of old growth red fur and big trees. I mean, these were giant trees. And tussig moth came in and took them all out. Within two years, they were all dead. And so it's like, well, we're not going to lose that value, so we went ahead.
Well, I am sorry, yeah, that moth is just
Other nature's in charge.
Reckon havoc. Oh, gosh, I I wish I wish I had blocked out an hour instead of a half hour. This is so great.
Yeah, you'll have to come back.
Yeah, well, hey, more reason to come back. But just to, you know, to go through this again, pile burning is a key key piece. I think you're probably aware of these these treatment areas, but we have four main areas that we're working on, non-commercial as well as commercial timber contracting. You can see where those are, a couple on West Mountain, a couple along Clear Creek. Just to highlight a really fun project that I was really proud of, our veg management team for conducting. If any of you have gone to the Ammonita campground this last year or two. You'll have to admit that it's been sort of in rough shape. And that's that's because of a fungus that really devastated the trees. You know, trees have a natural lifespan and those trees had lived theirs. And so they were starting to fall and so became a real hazard tree concern. And and so we cleared out a lot of those trees. And this fall, we had the chance to organize a group effort to replant. So we planted seven seven hundred and fifty trees and a bunch of shrubs and and new new vegetation all around that campground. So in the next several years, it's going to fill in really nicely and be a nice shady campground in ten or fifteen or twenty years, but yeah, but that was a really nice project. Just to talk about some of the numbers associated with some of the projects that we're shooting for this year. Almost eighteen hundred acres of treated land landscape this year for commercial and non-commercial thinning. You again, you see that GNA, so good neighbor authority. Love to work with you to to come up with some new contracts where we can recoup some of those those receipts from those timber sales that we can put directly back to restoring, you know, campgrounds and trails. Let's see. So these are just to highlight some of the specific contracts specifically for this coming year. I'm just going to cruise this. So just so I can get to recreation. So a couple of key things that have happened in the recreation world in the last year or so. So we we tried out for the first time an open season for our special use permits. Those are those are one of the primary ways that we can we can earn money, that we can put directly back to the landscape and restoring trails and campgrounds. But we we were just getting overwhelmed by the number of special use permit requests, just totally overwhelmed. And, you know, we we could point to lots of reasons for that. A lack of staffing, arduous processing. But whatever the reason, we really bogged down. And so the last year, we decided that we were going to have a one-month period when we would accept all of the year's special use permits. So that we could look at all of them at all at once and we could let those those requesters know right that year whether or not we were going to get to it that the following year.
Chris, can you explain what kind of special use permits you're talking about?
Yeah, so most of the ones that were in the last open season, which was in June, June to July. Most of those were like recreation cabin owner repairs around Warm Lake, for example. So they need repairs, they own the building, but they're sitting on Forest Service land. So there are certain requirements for them to do those repairs in the in the right way. So that's an example. Communication towers up on the hilltops, those are all special use permits. Outfitter and guides, you know, rafting and those are all special use permits. So we have different open seasons for different types of special uses. We have one that takes place in the spring, the one that I mentioned in the summer, and then another in the fall. So the the real goal behind that is that we're going to have some efficiencies in processing these. If we know that all of the all of the permits are going to come in at the same time. Instead of people just sending them in woolly nilly like they have been. So it hasn't been a perfect process by any means. We still have a lot to work through. But we we've identified ten special use permits, high high need, high profile projects. A lot of those are communication towers with major companies that are very prepared to pay pretty good money for those permits. Like Zipley and, you know, those types of communication companies. If if we can actually issue them the permit and and accept the the payment. So so we're working through that. Also this year, every two years, we have a recreation survey to determine the demand on our recreation across the forest. I think I think we can probably predict that we're going to have a lot of a lot of new recreation on the Boise National Forest. I don't I don't know if you've seen it, I know I've seen it, especially around Cascade, so.
Who's conducting that survey?
Oh, who who is, sorry? Some some graduate students from Utah State. Yeah, they're they're sort of taking out the whole year. And so they're going to be visiting different parts of the of the forest at different times of the year to get as as representative of a sample as they can, yeah.
You know, Chris, will they be in contact with this board or our recreation department?
I'd imagine they probably would be, yeah. I'm sure they are going to be looking for as much data as they can. A lot of the surveys are actual, you know, hands-on, on-the-ground surveys where they actually watch the number of people that come in. Campgrounds and trailheads and all the different uses, so. Yeah, so I'm really eager to find out, but I'm anticipating that we're going to see a pretty large uptick in the demand. And that kind of leads to the last thing. Unfortunately, my my time is gone and know you have other important matters to talk about. But I mentioned at the start that the best way of us making sure that the land stays beautiful and usable for all of the different uses that so many people rely on the forest for. The only way we can do that is if we work together. And there are a couple of ways that that us as the Forest Service can work with you as as the county. And some new ways, I think, to to raise some funds, to amplify some messages that we really, really need to get out there. So one way is through those good neighbor authorities. And I'd love to work with all of you afterwards. And I'd love to communicate with you via email and maybe we could set up a separate meeting. A little bit more informal to talk about that, what that is and how we could leverage that.
Do you know that we just hired our wildfire mitigation specialist through the GNA?
I didn't, hey, that's great, yeah.
We will have a full-time person on staff working the GNA contracts.
Excellent. Do you have that person's contact information? I'd love to reach out to them and
She'll be with us February first, so we'll make sure she has your contact.
That would be great, thank you so much. Yeah, that's a perfect example. And then the other way that I see, you know, the Cascade community, it's it's really tough for people to find housing here. Especially lower-wage, lower GS-grade employees. The people that that do most of the on-the-ground work, like maintaining trails and and doing those prescribed fires and things. And some some forests across the nation have found some success in working with their county to find a pot of land that maybe the federal government manages. But they don't have the money to build to build housing on it. Or vice versa, like the the county might have land. The federal government might have money that could go towards housing, but they don't have the the land appropriate for it. Excuse me. And and then through an agreement, that housing is is able to be built. And then some of the housing can be used for county employees and the rest can be used for federal employees. And so in that way, both can benefit. And both can get what they really need. But neither could really get on their own, so that's
Yeah, it's doing that right now with Brundage, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we are looking for any and all avenues. So I will definitely put that out there to the, we've got a housing trust that covers Valley County. I'll put that out there to them also.
Excellent.
That you guys are looking for something.
Yeah, no, I think that's such a great example. Brundage is a great example of that. And I I know that Tamrac has been looking at at some housing. They they've been building some housing for their employees. You know, I'm wondering if if we were to work together, throw some money towards their efforts to build some housing, then we could acquire some units for for our employees and yours. And so I think there's some creative ways of getting around this, but
Have you identified any parcels that might be advantageous?
Well, I I've been eyeing, we have a lot of land on our Crawford property that that we could, it's basically shovel-ready. We just, we don't have a budget allocated towards directly towards housing. But we do have some extra funds that maybe we could funnel to you and then as a grant. And then you could you could use that to to build housing units on on the federal land. So that's one parcel that that I've been looking at. I understand that the county has up the Warm Lake Highway, just on the west side there, Eagle's Nest.
Okay.
Yeah, right, right there, so. Yeah, so more to come. Sorry for going so long. But so good to connect with you. And I really am very eager to partner with you too. I think we can do a lot of really great work together, so.
And I really appreciate you coming in. I know you didn't have enough time today. I would like to encourage us to get together on a quarterly or biennial at least.
I would love that, yeah.
Get with Doug, get on the agenda and give yourself plenty of time for updates. Because I think it's important we communicate all the time.
Definitely, well, especially just how important, you know, nature is in this county, right? I mean, such a huge, huge driver, so.
Will the Boise be the one that's looking at the expansion permits for Tamrac?
Uh, yes, so I'm I'm the I'm the point of contact for that. And I'm working closely with the forest supervisor, Brandt Peterson. Yeah, and we've we've made some progress on that, actually. So maybe give you a little bit of a teaser for for the next conversation, but yeah.
How do we become a cooperating agency on that?
I I think the first thing is just we we just set up a meeting and just start talking about our interests and needs. I I don't think that there's really a a lesson manual or that for us to work from on this. I think we're going to have to just get creative. Yeah.
We're part of a conversation regionally about ski resorts and the permitting of ski resorts.
Yeah.
Nothing against Tamrac, but you guys look at the footprint, we need you to look outside the footprint. So we've been working with the District Rangers on trying to figure out how we work together to mitigate impacts off that footprint.
Yeah. And I I'm really glad you brought that up. I'm I'm really proud of my vegetative management specialist, Keith Wilson. He he really looks at the landscape holistically. So he doesn't look at Forest Service land and private land, he looks at the landscape. And so he he works really closely with the private landowners. Especially while they've been working on like French Hazard and, you know, on the the West Mountain area to work to work with private landowners so that they're aware of the grants that are available for for their land to be treated to. We're not allowed to cut Uh, for, for their land to be treated to, we're not allowed to cut trees on private land. Um, but we can, we can educate, we can work with counties and states to do that, so.
And that's where Mara will come in and be able to work with you and.
Yeah, I'm really excited about that, so thank you, to be continued.
All right, thanks, Chris.
Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Oh, my pleasure, thank you.
Yeah, don't be a stranger.
Hey, we're gonna move on down our agenda, these are action items, the next agenda item is the contract for animal shelter management services with McPaws. And this is in your packet. Um, Doug, can you remind me what we send them now?
So, uh, last year was fifteen thousand, if this agreement is approved. We were going to provide them a twenty-five thousand dollar contribution.
So Sheriff, come on up, I guess, you know, what is this worth to you, you guys in your department? How much, how many dogs are we taking up there from the county, that kind of an issue?
Um, first of all, good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I think we have to look at this in two different ways, one as county whole. Um, and two is the Sheriff's Office MOU. What this, what this does is it affords us the opportunity and the ability to be able to take injured dogs found on the side of the road or cats. A real big part of us is if there's an injury crash, say people are either lifelighted or transported to Boise, we have to have something to do with these animals. And that's twenty-four hours, seven days a week, they're giving us access to their facilities. Um, but, uh, whether we agree with it or not, I personally do, we know how important pets are to families. Um, heck, I've personally gone to McPaws one time for a, uh, for a call for service for fraudulent check and wound up leaving with a dog. And now, and then, you know, la- last time I went, we wound up with a ca- a service cat for up in dispatch, you know, and. And, uh, so, so the quality of care they have for the pets, which is huge for us, we don't wanna just drop off an animal, especially when you're below zero, have a rollover crash or something. I wanna know that they're protected, they have healthcare that, uh, available to them, it's warm, they have the kennels. I, I just, I think that we, we owe it to our community to give some sort of a, a pet service in a time of need and emergency.
So how many animals a year do you think you guys deal with?
Um, not a whole lot, usually six to eight on the outside. Um, but this, this is also affording the opportunity for when. When community members find a stray animal, to be able to bring it up there as well. Uh, because obviously it, it costs money, it, I just bought a bag of dog food yesterday for my dog and it was ninety dollars. And it's like, holy cow, for dog food, but, so that their, their fees are going up as well and, uh, but. Our thing is, is in the middle of the night, we have a place to drop animals off.
Do you do any kind of this work with Cascade Vet Clinic, if they had a chance to bid on this MOU as well?
No, no, we, we haven't, um. And I, I don't know, I know in, in times of need, we have called Keith during the day and he's actually come to crash scenes and picked up an animal that needed veterinary service immediately, like a little daughter or stuff like that. So it's not something that we wouldn't, we wouldn't ask for help. Our, this is for an animal that's going to need boarding or something for a while, while somebody gets healed up enough to come get their dog or have family members come in.
Most people will pay that themselves after they get healed up, correct?
It, they may, they may.
So my question would be, I mean, last year, I think Doug, you said it was fifteen thousand? They're asking for twenty-five. Can they show you in their paperwork, the, I guess I'm trying to justify the extra ten thousand is, is.
My thought would be on that is.
Sorry to have been budgeted, Commissioners, just for, for your information, that proposal was presented during the budget presentation. We've been working through this contract for quite some time, but the Commissioners have already approved that contribution for this fiscal year.
Oh, okay, okay, I was just asking the question.
Yeah, yes, and I, m- my guess would be, it's like everything, like I said. My bag of dog food for my pup was ninety bucks, so I, I just imagine that everything's going up, up, up and.
I know over the years, I've, I, during big old thunderstorms, I've ended up with two cowdogs at my place and. Took them over to McPaws and I'm sure they found their owners, but, um, yeah, they're, they're good resource. I don't, I don't.
They are, and, and I think, uh, the county has an expectation, if not a, a, uh, requirement to have some sort of animal control. A place to be able to put stray and injured animals for humane treatment.
And when we discussed this before, the reason for the extra ten is the keys to the castle, if you will. I mean, we had given them a donation, but they'd never, we didn't have an agreement in place where we could actually get into the facility twenty-four seven. These guys have to call, they gotta show up, McCall has had this with them for quite some time. And during that conversation, during budgeting, we felt that it was appropriate to move forward and do the same kind of an agreement that City McCall had, so.
And I, and I think the way our county's changing is becoming more and more important. It used to be that between ten at night and, and six in the morning, you could drive up and down this highway and not see anybody, and that's just not, not the case anymore. I, I came up from Boise at midnight the other night and it was like, what is going on? There was a lot, and so for us to have twenty-four seven access into that, to put some sort of animal in distress, I think, I think it's important, I, I think, uh. I think us humans that, that love our, our pets, uh, kinda demanding of it.
We do.
Well, I'm gonna be the one, probably the thorn in the side here, but I think this twenty-five thousand is way too much, I know we budgeted it during budget, but. Um, years ago, we figured out that we were paying the seniors about half of what we were paying for dogs, and so we cut it back. Then it felt like it should be kind of even or similar. And I know we jumped up the senior funding too as well, I think around, so around eleven thousand a year now, so that's twenty-two, but. Um, my other concern is that we have not given our local vet here in Cascade even a chance at this. And he has the right, the ability to say, hey, I'll do that for. A different figure, maybe the same, I don't know, or maybe he doesn't want it. But when we start putting one private business over another, I feel like it's really unfair and not a good way to run government.
And if, if that's what the Board wants to do, is set it up for bid, that, that's fine. Um, I, I have no issues with that either, I, I know Keith has come to our rescue several times. My only concern with that is, um. I'm not sure if there's a different point of entry into, I do not want my deputies be able to go in, drop off an animal and then have some sort of medication missing. Where I know you have completely different facilities with McPaws, I don't want my guys to be going in and then having missing medication or something like that.
I understand that, but I still think that, you know, I know Keith does a lot more than a few dogs every year, he does quite a few. Th- this kind of same service down at this end of the valley, and I think it's important that we give everybody a fair shot at this.
Has he ever expressed interest in it?
Yes, he has, in fact, he is, in the past, we've talked about why he does it for free. Why does McPaws get this kind of money when he's doing it for free for people? So there is some tension there, and I think it's a legitimate argument.
Why didn't this come up during budgeting where we could actually put it out for bid? Cause we've been working on an MOU now for months.
I couldn't answer that, I don't know, maybe perhaps it's our, our fault.
I remember sitting here and, and McPaws actually came up and, uh, did a presentation and everything earlier in the year, and I thought this was kinda ironed out, to be honest with you, so. Um, if you guys wanna pull back, that's, that's fully within your right.
I think it's important that we get something in place, I have no problem with opening it up, but I think we have to do it at the right time of year. I mean, we can't budget to give one group the funding and then turn around and withdraw it afterwards. In my opinion, they have done their budget based upon our agreement months ago. And, I mean, if Keith wants to do it, let's put it out there that this year, we're gonna put it out for bid and then actually put it out for bid and, and get some response.
Would it be appropriate then to give Keith or Cascade Vet Clinic a copy of this and see if they'd be interested on what their proposal would be and postpone this for a week or two? Cause this is a lot of money.
Again, I'll, I mean, we budgeted this and told McPaws, we're giving you this money and we'll do an MOU. I don't think that's fair to any business, to have us tell them, we, we've made this commitment to you and now we're gonna withdraw it after the fact. I mean, I think during the next budget round where we haven't made a commitment yet, I think that's appropriate, but. Um, I, I just wish this would have come up earlier so that we hadn't made that commitment prior.
Well, we've got, I know we've got testimony from the sheriff that it's six to eight animals a year, and I know Keith probably does that much or more. Without any kind of compensation, and I think this is not appropriate. I think, you know, for, to me, twenty-five thousand for six or eight dogs is, is way out of hand. But that's my feeling, and I'm one vote.
Well, for me, it was just, uh, you know, with Keith. Open it up for bid for next year, but this year, I'd like to see us drop the price down. That's why I was asking, you know, is this justified, another ten thousand? And six or eight dogs, and I know it's the having the ability for you guys to take animals there, whatever, you know, if it's an injured animal, it might go to Keith, it might go to them. Whoever's available, um. I mean, can we go ahead and drop the price down?
We've already committed though.
Cause we've already committed to twenty-five with theirs.
We've already told them they can have this funds with this MOU being in place, so our team's been working on the MOU. I, I don't know how we change our.
Uh, you know, I don't have a problem this year, just go ahead and approve this. But next year, we can, we have to put this out for bid, cause I wasn't aware that Keith even had ability to store dogs or store animals. And he has the right to, anybody has the right to bid on that.
And I agree with that.
And I agree, and if you're gonna do that, then I say you open up it to all veterinarians in the county, not just Keith. There's more, and if, I have, I have no issue with little capitalism and bidding for services, I have no, no problems with that, um.
Well, I'd, I'd like to make a motion for this year that we go ahead and approve this. It's twenty-five thousand for, uh, like Paws for this year and.
And the MOU?
And the MOU.
And I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion to second to approve this MOU for this year with direction to the Sheriff's Department to see if any other vet clinics are interested in this contract for next year.
Next year.
Would that work, everybody?
Absolutely.
Are you willing to take that on?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we don't have anything else to do.
Well, I think before we vote on this, the other point that I was trying to make is that it seems like we get a lot of these kind of situations coming out the canyon. Now, who's closer to haul that dog to Cascade Vet or McCall? So we're gonna say some gas money and some sheriff's deputy time and we can do this closer. And I think that's relevant to the cost, the total cost of this. That's a long drive to take a dog or a cat.
We had one crash this last year that we couldn't get ahold of anybody up here, so deputies wound up on their own time driving them down to Boise to do an emergency service.
Oh, my goodness.
So we're doing that too.
Do you normally drop them in McCall or is it the Donley? Where do you?
McCall.
McCall.
McPaws facility itself, and that's, that's a nice thing, they have a separate veterinary place to where we're not anywhere near prescription medication and stuff like that, that.
Is this?
That's a concern to me.
Is the McCall's in Donley, you know, that one just on Coho, is that still operational?
Believe so, yeah, yeah, I think that's their actual veterinary service there.
The shelter is in McCall, but their surgery center is.
Hey, we got a motion and a second to approve this MOU for this year, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And for, you know, to get it out in time, we probably should start spreading that word, we'll start budgeting in, what, May, April, April or May?
I'll, I'll help out on that.
Thank you, Kevin.
We have one more thing coming up here.
Okay, and this is for, this is the next agenda, yeah, okay, next agenda items and action item, this is approved, the Idaho Department Parks and Rec WIF grant, Sheriff, Kevin, welcome.
Morning Commissioners, um, as you're aware, I've emailed you, you guys, the, uh, bid. Two weeks ago and that, um, this is just the final on it, as far as what Waterways has approved or. Um, recommended for a match towards that, so, um, the grant amount will actually be one hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars. And they've, we've come up with a match of seventy-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. And that does not include the either trade-in or the outright sale of the boat that we're willing to part with. So that would be, that amount would actually be even less.
So the match you guys have in Waterways, it's not gonna be general fund dollars?
No, it's, it's out of the capital boats, I believe.
Okay, everybody understand that? If we're good, I need a motion to approve that grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant for the recreation Parks and Rec WIF grant.
I will second that.
And a motion to second to approve the Idaho Department of Parks and Rec WIF grant, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries.
So I, that picture, that one that we were looking at the other day over there, that's, uh, that's what it's gonna be, that jet boat?
Yeah.
That was a good-looking.
It'll be, it'll be very similar to that, so.
Any idea?
Trying to model it after tho- those two different boats.
Yep.
Um, cause those are the newest boats that the IDPR has granted to the counties. That'll give us the ability to get in the shallow water. I have to worry about props hanging off the back of the boat or.
That's jet boat.
Uh, Kevin, is there anything for us to sign?
Uh, no, this is. This has been signed, I don't know if you wanna see it, it's just, it's, just proceed with it, so.
So that doesn't include the trade-in of the boat?
This, the seventy-three thousand does not include that trade-in, we've up, we've received a ten thousand dollar trade-in allowance for it. But we're thinking about putting it out to bid to see if, if there's any offers that are higher.
And how that came about is, um, we were speaking with the Waterways Advisory Committee last, and. I don't know if you folks remember, but it used to be like our, our, our old patrol vehicles would go for five, seven, eight hundred dollars. We started putting them out on, on the government bids, and now we're talking upwards of six thousand dollars. And so I'm just thinking, a, an equipped boat, and it's an Alamar boat, it's not like it's a cheap boat. I'm just, I'm just not sure that we couldn't get significantly more money selling it at auction and then backfilling it, and so it's gonna be at least ten thousand. I, I fully expected an auction that's gonna go for considerably more than ten thousand dollars.
I think so, especially in today's market, yeah.
So we just figured it's worth a shot, it's, it's the middle of winter, so you either trade it in, but it, it's sitting undercover right now, we might as well take pictures of it, give it a shot, we'll just put ten thousand dollars as a reserve. If it, if it doesn't meet it, we do the trade-in, and if it, if it exceeds it, then we, we just brought this, we brought this number down.
So Kevin, do you talk to like other Waterways committees, other counties that are maybe looking for a boat like this?
Uh, I have not talked to any, I was just at the, uh, MAC meeting, which is the Marine Advisory, um, last week. And it didn't sound like anyone else is pushing for a boat right now. Um, I did talk to one of the, the Waterway, uh, committee guys down in Boise that will be looking at this grant. And he thinks it's a good one to go after right now, um, especially after the last, I think it's twelve years, we have not asked for a, a WIF grant. Through the county, I mean, we've, we've helped with, uh, the dock projects and that, but they, he thinks it's a good one to go for right now.
So it has.
Have anything else going?
You've already submitted it, or it's?
No, it will not get submitted, this was, um, it's not gonna get submitted, we don't have to have it until January twenty-sixth, that is the deadline for it. So I just wanted to get this going and get with Kenzie this week and get it finalized and.
Good, good job, good work, all right.
Even if it doesn't sell at auction, I would imagine somebody up here is looking for a good boat.
And that's a possibility, I mean, it's just.
Ten thousand dollars is cheap for a boat, so.
So, and, you know, we left it, we know we can get ten out of it through this month, so. That'll just help towards the match amount.
Yeah, Mike's a single guy, he hates boats.
What does that have to do with being a single guy?
Thank you, Commissioners.
This is for the, uh, McPaws MOU. So, hey, how are you?
Morning.
How you doing, Charlie?
Uh, yeah, we did approve the, uh, the grant, uh, in our committee last time, so we're okay, it's, the numbers there. Again, it has to be outfitted, so there may be some additional costs there that we have allocated.
How many boats do you guys have?
Oh, jeez.
Uh, we have.
Four or five.
Four patrol boats right now and one workboat. Four patrol boats right now and one workboat.
We still have that barge for all the, the uh, she, what is that stuff called?
The buoy work?
No, the moss and all that stuff.
Uh, yeah, actually, that is the one that's out at the road department.
There, and now that's, the state's taking that program over, correct?
And that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're not doing that anymore.
I know they're still doing some weed removal.
Well, it used to be under a weed department, but I think the state came in and said they're gonna take that over if I remember right.
It was for five years. They're doing a five-year test on it. We don't know what they're gonna do after that, but.
They, they're gonna need that vessel, all that stuff.
So this is the oldest boat you guys have, so this is the one you traded?
Yeah.
Good.
Almost twenty years, yeah.
So the snow and primarily gonna be used, one of the two lakes or both?
Uh, this boat would primarily be used on Cascade, just because it's a shallower lake, and that way we can have the two jet boats down here. Whereas McCall is a deeper lake, so the props work a little better up there.
Sure, sure, makes sense. Okay, thanks you guys.
Quickie, the Quagmire missiles, we are, at our next meeting, we have some experts come in, trying to determine what is it really, how will it affect us, and then we'll go forward and try to either set up a meeting or advise you guys.
Good, good.
About what we're gonna do, so just let you know.
Yeah, Dave, Dave that's in our committee, he, he gave a real good presentation on that. He's, it was good information.
Trying to get the ACT department, uh, any of the other sort of state agencies to come in and let's establish how much of danger is it to our environment here, what can we do about it? And also the cost involved, also how do we do the testing? We've talked to the sheriff about it. There's, there's a couple of things that involve.
Be interesting that, I was at the um, McCall meeting last week, and they're trying to expand the marina up there. There was a lot of conversations around fees in order to launch a boat, so I don't know if they, they have talked to you guys about that yet, though, yeah.
That's another issue, because a lot of that's public money, and yeah, I, the IDPR doesn't allow you to charge fees on, on projects that they get, put money into it, so we'll have to have a discussion there with them.
Kurt, Kurt told me he'd been talking with you guys, hopefully, yeah. And then they want boat wash stations.
Yeah, but that question is, how much does it cost? Where are we gonna put it? Is it really necessary, or do we have other means of doing it? So there's other things there. There's a bunch of other stuff involved. The other thing with the cost, if you start to fee at the city ram, and everybody's gonna go to Ponderosa Park, and they become all overloaded, so we gotta, you know, we have an issue that we have to be, be careful what we do there, so, you know, there's.
You guys probably need to weigh in on that conversation.
We had a pretty good discussion of all that.
Yeah, we had a good discussion, so.
Good, thanks for keeping up with it. Right, you guys, have a great day. We're gonna keep right on going. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is a request from the Cascade Library for funding for improvements to the library. Maria, welcome. Good to see you again.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So I'm here on behalf of the Cascade Public Library and the city, and as you know, we were awarded a half a million dollars to do an expansion for the library because we are exceeding our capacity of thirty-two people, because we have programs now. We have K through twelve, uh, in-school and out-of-school program, twelve to five-thirty, um, three times a week. And we may open more, uh, depending, I'm working with the Cascade After School Program, and as you know, the school is closed on Fridays, and their after-school program called CAP is closed on Mondays, so I'm hoping to open on Mondays. And I'm al- already open on Fridays, but I may extend hours like during spring break. Those kids have no place to go uh, during holidays, and we have other grants that we're, that we're using for programs. However, we don't have money to finish our construction project. We were awarded a half a million dollars, but um, we couldn't do that outdoor um, awning, and I have provided a drawing for you. Do you have that? So the awning is that, that uh, roof that will cover the outdoor uh, uh, fire doors, because we're removing the fire doors in the back, because that's what, um, that's what made us flood. And there's no other way, no matter how much the city grades the back alley behind um, by Watkins, the water would still flow if there's another flood. So we're gonna shut that down, so now our fire exits will be on the north side during, where the um, addition is. And because the awning is twenty thousand dollars more, but our bid came at four hundred eighty-nine thousand, so we're only under seven thousand dollars. And that awning would help a lot because uh, during winter, it will keep the, the snow away from the walkway, so we don't have to shovel. And also, it'll be a sun shade for the summer during our summer programs. Like last summer, we had forty-one kids uh, for our programs. And as you know, we already have a meeting room, but it can only hold, uh, like thirteen people. So we had to split the class, like half would be in the meeting room and half would be art, on the parking lot or in the li- little eve by the Friends of the Library building. So with this new addition, we're hoping that, um, well, will fit all of the students in the uh, in the uh, classroom, and then we can also do outdoor space uh, programs with, with this awning, because the awning is gonna be eight foot, it's gonna be as big as the slab. So I have, we have square cushions where sit, where kids can sit on the floor and do the singing and the dancing and the reading during the summer. And we're gonna have a little health equipment outside where they can, when we do health classes, because the grants that, that we have requires that we do health classes, so we're gonna be doing pull-ups and exercises and yoga, because we're not doing grass, we're doing um, rubber tiles. And so I have a lot of grants that will go towards um, programs, instructors, furniture, but they don't cover construction. And the only reason why we have the construction covered is because uh, the ICFL had this once in a blue moon of construction grant. So I'm here to see if you can help us meet, meet that uh, fund of, I believe it's seven thousand thirty-eight. Um, you have the bid in front of you and we're using Dalrymple. They were the lowest, well, I had three contractors that wanted to bid the job, but I think when they heard uh, Dalrymple was bidding it, they felt that they couldn't beat them, because they're, they're usually, um, they ha- they're well-priced. They're do, they're also doing the construction for the city's, um, I be- I believe Public Works Garage, so they're doing really well, and they have given us a lot of um, discounts. You have the bid in front of you, the yellow part, that's not part of the construction grant, they're doing that for us for free. That's worth about forty-five hundred dollars. And they also offered to put the health equipment, install the health e- equipment for free.
So I guess, Maria, my only question, and you may have spoke of it and I missed it, but I guess my concern is that if we get another fire, is the flooding out, alley issue, is that resolved, or are you gonna get flooded again?
No, because we are blocking the back door, we will not, that will stop the water from flowing.
And then it'll go around the building down the alley that way, so that issue is getting fixed?
Yes.
Okay.
So i- is this just for the awning, the seven thousand?
Yes.
It's just for the awning to cover the?
The awning's twenty thousand nine hundred fifty-nine. So seven thousand thirty-eight is the only money we, we are lacking, because our bid came under, Dalrymple uh, made it under five hundred thousand. Uh, you have the breakdown with you?
We, oh, we legally give twenty-one to you like that? I just don't know.
So the concern is, we don't fund anything that is specific to one community. As a county, we fund only programs and then projects which touch all parts of the county. So doing something just for Cascade would not be something I would approve, because then you open the door to the Donley Library that's also going through expansion. McCall Library is going through expansion, so.
So you've never, I'm sorry, you've never donated to a library?
We've never donated to a s- uh, not that I know of, not in the four years I've been around. Um, no, I mean, because it is city-specific. I mean, the county is an umbrella for all of the communities. So the only thing I've ever been in favor of funding is if it touches all communities.
Well, this library provides services to all children. We have children coming from McCall because they go to the swim le- they take swim lessons at the uh, rec center. So they come in, they do their math, uh, because we have a great math tutor, they do their tutoring, and then they go swim at the rec center. And we have, we cover, we have students all the way, we have uh, students all the way from the Round Valley that are homeschooled. Out of the forty-one students that we had, thirty-eight of them were homeschooled. Uh, I don't know if you're familiar, but there's a lot of homeschool kids uh, in this area, not just in Cascade.
Lowermore Cunningham is very fond of, the foundation is very fond of libraries. Have you done any grant requests with them?
That name sounds familiar. I, I, I can double check, but I believe we had, I can double check, but I believe if we did apply for that, I may not have gotten it.
I think there's other funding sources out there that would be interested in doing this type of a thing. I'm, I just, I'm just not in favor of opening the door to where we're gonna have to.
That's why, that's why I was asking the question. I just.
I don't know that it's illegal, but. To my knowledge and to, my knowledge of doing community service here, I think the last time the county funded something specific, it was to a snowmobile club. And you guys were very frustrated when you found out it was only for one club and not county-wide.
Well, and you make a good point, the fact that McCall's doing a library right now, and they're underfunded, but they haven't come to us to ask for funds, because it's not something that we really wanna get started.
I was unaware of that.
County's doing an expansion also.
Yeah, and Donley, but they've done, gotten a lot of funding from private. That was my next question. Have you gone to the chamber? Have you gone to your private citizens?
Yes, they are gonna be helping us with furniture.
Buying furniture?
Yes, uh, library furniture, uh, bookshelves, and Stevna Foundation's gonna help us with books, so we have.
Well, it's your pleasure. Need a motion?
I would move that we deny the request for the Cascade Library for funding, just simply based, it's not that I don't approve of your program, you know, but just based on the fact that we fund uh, regional projects and not city-specific projects.
Second. Got a motion and a second in my favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is an executive session, Pareto Code seventy-four two oh six one B. This is for evaluation. So I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we go into session, fix session for seventy-four dash two oh six one B.
A second.
Um, we have a motion and, and a second. A roll call, please.
Thompson, aye.
Pop, an aye.
Esbrook, aye, and Douglas shoot for eleven-ten. If you guys need a break, this would be a quick time to take a break.